Welcome, everybody. This is a meeting of the Transportation Committee of the Baltimore City Council. In attendance, we have myself, Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. I'm the Chair of the Committee. We have Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District. We have, from the 9th District, Dr. John Bullock, member of the Committee. We are also joined today by Dominic McIlly from the Council President's Office. We are joined by Matt Stegman from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations and various other representatives from other city agencies. We are here today for a hearing on Bill Number 200558, an ordinance entitled "City Officers and Employees' Commuting Benefits." I, myself, am the sponsor of this bill, and I appreciate everybody coming today for this hearing. We have various agency, we have agency reports that have been submitted. We are also joined today by Committee to, Staff to the Committee, Jennifer Coats. Thank you, Jennifer, for preparing the materials and distributing them today and getting this meeting hosted virtually. And I think that covers kind of also all the basic business here. As the sponsor of the bill, I'll just talk about it for a couple of minutes and kind of where things are at. This is a bill that touches on, obviously, commuting benefits for city employees. It recognizes a couple of things, and I'll talk about the amendment that I've distributed that basically rewrites the whole bill. But it touches on three things. The fact that there is not a written standard as to any eligibility criteria for an employee to receive a transportation benefit. And just as somebody who believes in the importance of governing policy and guidance on standards, expectations, evaluation of costs and benefits, and general oversight and good governance, I think it's important to there be some sort of written policy and standards. Two, it recognizes that we are presently only exclusively providing any employees of the city a transportation benefit in the form of a parking subsidy or free parking. That is, there are agencies like the Fire Department who provide take-home vehicles and certain other employees, notably council members and other elected officials, and a number of people have take-home vehicles. But I guess that's not really looked at, per se, as a fringe benefit. I don't know. It's actually a separate conversation that I guess needs to be had. But the, but the, what concerns me, and what is at the nature of the heart of this bill, is that we are providing employees a transportation benefit that subsidizes and supports, and in so doing encourages, the use of single-occupant vehicles, which effectively promotes the consumption of fossil fuels, promotes congestion, particularly considering that the vast majority, if not all, of these employees who receive this benefit work immediately downtown, where we, I would say, all probably agree that congestion is, you know, nearly, if not entirely, the worst in the city, and where we should be seeking to relieve that congestion to the best of our ability instead of fostering it, literally paying money to create it. And, and that this is to the exclusion of any other alternative transportation benefit for those same employees. Again, there's no eligibility criteria, but, for example, if a person who, if they owned a car, would receive free parking, but does not own a car, they get no benefit in that parking's place. Meanwhile, their equal counterpart colleague, for example, a staff member in a city council office, if they have a car, they can get a parking benefit. If they don't, they have to pay out of pocket for their bus ride to and from work every day, while the person in the next office over has, you know, $100 a month benefit. $100 for the city to allocate for parking is more than it would cost for that bus pass, yet we offer no alternative. And so the third thing is, to this point, in a bigger picture, is that right now, we provide a parking benefit, which effectively is a transportation subsidy, a fringe benefit for the purpose of supporting transportation. We provide that to about 5% of city employees and nothing whatsoever of a comparable or, you know, similar nature to the other 95% of city employees. There may be a lot of employees who park in parking lots and don't have to pay to park at those parking lots, for example, say, like the Eastern Sanitation Yard, and things like that. But, but, but those employees are not being provided any sort of fringe benefit, per se, in the way a parking subsidy is. And so that, to me, is, seems, seems a pretty clear inequity. And at the same time, again, to come back to the point about consumption of fossil fuels, it raises the question of, should the city be doing something for, with its, you know, 13,000 employees to encourage the use of public transportation? More than public, you know, advocacy campaigns, paying lip service to wanting to get people onto public transit, like actually doing something to take responsibility for the fact that it has 13,000 employees coming to work every day, and that we, as a city, and as a, as a city of neighborhoods, as a city of communities, as a city of people, would be better off if more people were using public transit, and that we should use that, we should use that power. So those are the things baked into this bill. What do we have today? I have an amendment that has been distributed that effectively strikes all of the substantive content of this bill, or rather, strikes all of the codified text in this bill, anything that would require anything or set anything in law, and replaces it all with a simple request for a study from the Department of Finance and the Department of Human Resources. And so having kind of laid all that out, and so a study on this general subject, and sets up some parameters around it. Having laid all of that out, we have a bunch of agency reports, probably at least half of which are purely in reflection of the original text of the bill and have not considered this amendment. And so I'm just going to go through and ask everybody to keep all of that in mind as they report on behalf of their agencies, and if, you know, if they can keep that in mind and keep it as simple as possible, that'd be great, because I'd like to get to a place where we can have a discussion with the committee and agencies about these kind of ideas. So with that said, I'd like to start with the agency reports. As soon as I ask if any other committee members have anything that they'd like to say before we do that.
I'm fine, Mr. Chair. Nothing at this point, Mr. Chair.
All right, great. Well, then we'll start with the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Elena DePietro for the City Law Department. Yeah, I, as you probably know, if you saw my report, I had some serious issues with the original form of the bill. The amended form certainly is okay, as it doesn't really impact this in the same way that the, that the original form of the bill did. I just want to make one note about, about the, the original form, especially the cash, cash for not using the parking benefit, that actually might actually hurt those people more than it helps them, those that don't use the parking benefit, because that would probably be taxed as income to them. So.
The federal government allows for a pre-tax fringe benefit for the, for transportation.
I'm just not sure, under those circumstances, it would be considered a fringe benefit.
I've read the IRS guidance.
You're not actually getting a benefit. You're just getting paid.
I've read the IRS guidance on this. It's pretty clear.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I agree with that, but that's okay. And the other part is, as far as, you know, the, whether, who gets these types of things, I mean, they are negotiated to a large part by the employee representatives. So the criteria, I think, are, might be found in some of those agreements. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that. And the final thing is, some of our professional employees actually take city jobs because they have a, they are civic-minded and are willing to take less money for what, than what they would have made in the private sector. So they actually, you know, little things like this do go a long way to keeping really good people at professional levels in the city, as city employees. That's it for the Law Department.
Thank you. I have some questions based on what's in your report, because I think it's, I'd like to be able to think about some of this stuff.
Okay.
Start thinking about this stuff now and over the next several months, but I want to come back to that. I want to go to the other agencies first, and there may be some people who need to get off or whatever, and I want to let them go. So can we go to DHR next?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, committee members. We also likewise had issues with the bill in its original form. I have had an opportunity.
Can you let us know who you are, Quentin?
I'm sorry. Quentin Herbert, Director of Human Resources. I have had an opportunity, Mr. Chair, to review the amended bill, and I support that bill. I think that a study is, is in hand. It would be prudent for us to do. I would simply echo what, the last thing that Elena said on behalf of the Law Department, that what we have seen is that particularly with the professional-level employees, those employees are civic-minded, and they come to the city with the understanding that our compensation is not as healthy as some of our surrounding neighbors, and the parking benefit is something that, it is an enticement for them to come to the city. What I would also envision is that if we can't offer parking, that would simply be something that candidates and future employees would simply negotiate, you know, into their starting salary, attempt to negotiate into their starting salary. So it, you know, I just want us to keep that in mind as well, as a consideration.
Thank you. Finance?
Good afternoon, Chairperson Dorsey. This is Mara James, representing the Department of Finance. Similar to the other agencies, we did initially oppose the bill as written, but in speaking with you and the other agencies interviewing the amendments, we are supportive of a study. We appreciate the time it will allow us to review the data, to come up with a cost analysis, and understand best practices around this, as well as work with our partner agencies to figure out where we stand on that. I also want to add that based on the study and what comes out around best practices and fiscal analysis, Finance will then be better able to assess our position of whether we support or oppose such policies. I also want to note that Director Raymond is on the line and defer to him if he wants to add.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Honorable members of the committee, this is Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. I just want to echo what Director Herbert from DHR indicated that origi, the original legislation we were opposed to, primarily for the reasons stated in the Law Department's response. Based on the amendments offered, the Department of Finance supports Council Bill 200558 with amendments, and the Finance Department looks forward to working with DHR and the Parking Authority regarding the parking process. So I just wanted to have that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. I should, I should say, I really appreciate the partnership of both DHR staff and Finance staff in talking through this idea, and I'm really looking forward to, you know, being a, being a collaborator in this process, if you'll let me.
We will. Thank you, sir.
Great, thanks.
Sorry, I'm here. Pete Little, Executive Director with the Parking Authority. Hello, Mr. Chair, and other council members. I'm not sure that our response to the bill got to you in time, but as with other city agencies, the Parking Authority did not support the bill as it was originally written, but I have had an opportunity to review the amendments, and as amended, the Parking Authority supports this bill and would work with those other city agencies to conduct that study.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Stegman from the Mayor's Office. Just wanted to let you and the other committee members know, the Parking Authority's report, apparently we have too many Matts working in city government, and so it was misdelivered, but it should be in your inbox now. So apologize for any confusion there.
Thank you. DOT?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Liam Davis with Baltimore City DOT. We stand by your bill report, which is support or favorable.
Thank you. I may have a question related to transportation in a bit. Who else do we have here? We have, I see Bill Wells, HABC?
Thank you, Chairperson Dorsey and the Council. Bill Wells, Senior Vice President for Business Strategy at the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. I received the amendment just a short time ago. As the amendment strikes the section that included HABC, it, it really makes our bill report moot. I would point out that the Housing Authority, in terms of parking and arrangement of employees, is a little bit different than what you described for, you know, the core Baltimore City government employees downtown. While our office is located in the Benton Building, as you know, our developments are across the city, and the majority of our staff then work in these locations. So our, the relationship to parking downtown is probably much less than, than other agencies. If there were other ways that we could collaborate with, with you or with Transportation and other city agencies in terms of parking and transportation, we'd be happy to do that as we're not, if this amendment goes forward, if we're not named in the bill, then the Housing Authority wouldn't take a position one way or another.
Thanks. For the record, I think it's, it's important to be clear about kind of scope of consideration here. You know, what I'm really talking about is, is parking, my assumption, just to your point, is that those employees who are at sites away from downtown, not in office buildings, one, are not, you know, they're not parking in city-owned garages, probably. There probably aren't city-owned garages in those areas necessarily, and those employees are perhaps not of the same, you know, job classifications that typically have these kind of benefits conferred to them in the first place. It's really, it's the scope of consideration when you're, when we're talking about a cash-out policy, is, is employees for whom a city agency is making a transfer of funds specifically to pay for the parking of that individual employee. There is a broader consideration about employees receiving a discount on parking and whether the city, you know, under a parking, under a really rigid parking cash-out policy, would have to say, well, if they're getting a $20 discount, we should offer them the $20 and let them decide whether they want to, you know, continue, if that's, if $20 is enough to keep, to make somebody decide not to drive their car to work, you know, I'd be surprised. So, but just to that point, is, it really only centers around, I don't know of any employees that, you know, this would affect who aren't working downtown.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you. We have Dominic McIlly from the Council President's Office on here. Just wanted, Dominic, do you want to chime in? Do you have anything to add on behalf of the Council President's Office?
No, Mr. Chair, I don't have anything.
All right. Thanks for being with us. And Matt, I think you chimed in about the bill report there. Anything to add on behalf of the Mayor's Office?
No, we defer to our agencies, but thank you for the opportunity.
All right, cool. Thanks. Um, so I'll come back to the committee members at this point. Do you have any questions or thoughts or anything from the committee members at this point?
Mr. Chair, this is Stephanie Marad from the Department of Housing.
Sorry.
No, no, no problem at all. And I have to apologize, we did submit our bill report, but it doesn't seem to be on Legistar. As proposed, we defer to the Department of Finance. We did receive your amendment, and we are in support of the amendment, and many of the items covered in your amendment were items highlighted in our bill report. So just wanted to add that in.
Great. Thank you, Stephanie. I'm sorry I missed you on my list here.
And then, Mr. Chair, no questions or comments here.
Okay, great. Thank you. We did have, the bill was assigned to the Police Department. I don't see that we have anybody from the Police Department on here, but I did hear from Michelle Wertzberger an hour or so ago, and informed her of the intention here with this amendment. Vice Chair Pinkett, you cool?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Great. So I just have a couple of questions for the Law Department, because I'm really curious about this, and I'd like to kind of get my own gears turning about this. The report talks about the Board of Estimates, and it cites adequately the charter provision related to the Board of Estimates setting the fiscal policy of the city, setting and executing the fiscal policy of the city. And I guess, I'm curious, is that, is that an unlimited power? Is that, is that not limited by any other, you know, consideration of city code, city law?
Well, the charter is like the, the charter is, is like the Constitution for the city. So just like our state constitution, a local law, a state law or a local law, in the, in the case of this, of the city charter, can't change the Constitution or can't change the charter. So the charter amendment is the appropriate way to deal with any necessary changes in that regard.
So does that mean, for example, that the Board of Estimates is not bound by things like the city's land use laws? Would it be, would it be legal for the Board of Estimates to issue a contract to build something that was in violation of the city's zoning code?
I think that's not fiscal policy, so the Board of Estimates wouldn't, wouldn't have, wouldn't have the power to, you know, act in a way that was not related to the fiscal and, you know, situation, the city. That's, I don't think, I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to have more facts there, but they, I can't imagine they'd be ever in a position of, they're not the owner of any property. The Mayor and City Council is the owner of the properties that, or, you know, they don't own property privately. They're not even an entity in and of itself, so they would never be, the Board of Estimates would never be entering into a contract on their own. It's, the corporate body is the Mayor and City Council. So they're just, they're just executing on powers given to them in the charter, and those powers are given to, you know, are put together by the people, basically. The people have determined what they want the charter to say. Our charter is very different from most local charters in that it has a lot more detail than a more modern charter would have. It sort of goes really beyond the form and structure of government in a lot of cases.
Uh-huh. Um, yeah, I guess I'm trying to, I'm curious whether there's a lane here where we're not talking about fiscal policy. What, you know, if we're talking about...
Sorry, it was mine. Turning it off.
If we were talking about setting a policy that was part of an overarching transportation policy for the city, that in the interest of, you know, or say, the environmental goals of the city. If we were setting a policy that just says, in the interest of transportation and the interest of the environment, the city of Baltimore doesn't pay money, you know, does not allocate funds to pay for personal transportation to and from work?
If, I mean, if the state wanted to do something like that, they actually couldn't even do it if it was specific to Baltimore City, because they, they can, the state can't enact a law that's applicable only to a single jurisdiction that impinges upon that jurisdiction's own rule powers.
I'm not asking about the state. I'm saying us.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I mean, the, the city to do it would have to do it with, within the, you know, constraints of, of the charter powers of the agencies and the, and the powers of the Mayor and of the City Council.
So if, if the City Council were to enact a transportation or environmentally rooted policy, if there were an ordinance that said, and, and, and a codified, you know, became a codified law, that the city, in the interest of, is it really just a matter of voicing motivation and saying, this is not fiscally motivated, but it's environmentally and transportation motivated? That it becomes that, and then is the Board of Estimates then obligated not to violate that law?
If it impacts on the fiscal powers of the Board of Estimates, like requires them to pay money, or requires the city to pay out money for something, or, or, or other areas of compensation, for example, if they're all, if they infringe upon those areas of the authority of, of the Board of Estimates or any other city agency that's stated in the charter, then no, you couldn't do it, in spite of how you presented.
So if we were to take off the table the idea of, say, a parking cash-out policy or providing commuter, you know, benefits to anybody, and just simply say, the city no longer pays for parking for anybody. We're not, we're not, it's not an instruction or conditions that the board has to meet. We're not, we're not, it's not an instruction or conditions that the board has to meet to actually pay something out. It just says, this is not something that's legal to do anymore.
Well, it's the same as trying to fund something. You know, you're still affecting the fiscal policy of the city. So it's the same as saying in a piece of legislation, I'm, and the city's going to donate, you know, or is going to dedicate a million dollars to, you know, Councilman idea of, you know, everybody must have, everybody gets a bus pass or something.
Yeah, but the opposite, I'm saying. The opposite, I'm saying.
I know, but I know it's the opposite, but it's still the same, it's still the same concept that they, you're, you're preventing them from appropriating, which is what their job is. Their job is to appropriate. The City Council doesn't have the authority to say you can't appropriate something by ordinance. The only way you could do that, the only power you have with respect to appropriations is the power that, in the, in the, but with the budget, and, you know, it may change after the, this election, we'll see.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
That makes sense. Another question here, and I don't actually have much more that I've, that's on my mind. It's just curious to me that the City Council or the city of Baltimore could pass a law, from what I can tell, we could pass a law that would require a parking cash-out option be offered by any other employee, any other employer in the city except ourselves, right? If we wanted to say, if we wanted to say.
Can you say that again? I don't get that.
Does that make sense?
Can you rephrase that? No, could you rephrase it? I'm not sure.
Sure. If the city of Baltimore wanted to say, if we wanted to pass a law, well, we already, we passed laws, we have laws, we passed laws related to employee rights and work conditions and such like that, and, and certain requirements of employers. If we wanted to say, any employer of over 40 people must provide to any employee for whom they incur a monetary expense to provide employee, parking to that employee, must also offer the employee the option of receiving cash in lieu of that. For example, if a downtown, if a downtown business in a, in a high-rise has down in that, or in a, in a tall, you know, an office building leases parking spaces in the garage at the base of that building that's not owned by that business. If they, if they spent money to provide parking for those employees, you know, on an individualized basis, then they must offer those employees the option of a cash alternative. We could pass, we could.
I am, I'm not sure you could pass a law like that, actually, because that, you might, if, you might be infringing upon a contractual relationship between two private parties, the employer and their employee. And so I'm not sure that you could do that, but I haven't looked into it, so I don't really know. That's just off the top of my head. But, so I don't think that's a good analogy.
Well, I mean, such laws have existed.
On the flip side, we, we pass, you guys pass laws all the time that aren't funded, and so they never come to fruition. I mean, there's all kinds of things in the, in the code that just have either weren't, aren't funded now and used to be funded, and so they, you know, it's, the unfunded mandate is a, is a common thing in, in political America.
Okay, I'll take that as an aside. I mean, I think that, look, the fact is, is that there's been, these laws of this nature, cash-out laws, have been in place in other places for many years. And before, you know, there've been a state, for example, is a statewide law in California that's been around for more than a decade. And these policies have been put in place at other local levels elsewhere. I guess, I'm curious and would ask that the Law Department get me an answer on that. I'd like to know.
Send me an email so I don't forget, okay?
Well, thank you. I don't think there's anything else that I, that's on my mind. So since we have, so I appreciate, thank you for the conversation, Elena.
No problem.
I want to thank everybody for their bill reports. I guess as the sponsor of the bill and the sponsor of the amendment, oh, I want to thank, I don't know if DLR is on here, but I always want to thank Tony DiFranco. He's just so helpful in getting things turned around so quickly. I don't see him on here, but everybody on here can tell Tony that I thanked him. So as the sponsor of the bill and the amendment, I guess I will myself make a motion to move the amendment on the bill favorable. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll take a voice vote on the amendment. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great. No opposed? I think I heard all three of our voices here. The amendment is adopted as favorable. I'll make a motion on the bill favorable as amended. Is there a second? Who got it?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bullock. We'll take a roll call vote. Chairman Dorsey votes yes. Vice Chair Pinkett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pinkett votes yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock votes yes. The bill is voted favorable as amended by the committee and will come before the full City Council on second reader at the next City Council meeting. That concludes this hearing of the Transportation Committee. Thank you all for your time today. Chair, committee?